Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday, December 4th Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorien.
Here.
Landrigan, Lee.
Here.
Manukian. Chairperson Yesaien.
Here, thanks. Can we have a report regarding posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, November 27th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand and repeat after me the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You really?
Would you have an invocation? Do we have approval of minutes? Any comments? No? Can we have a motion?
So moved. You mean for the last planning?
Actually, you weren't here, so...
That's what I asked.
Yeah.
So moved.
Yeah. And a second?
Second.
Okay. We don't need a roll call for that, so we'll move on. Oral communication, I do not have any cards. If you do want to speak on a matter today, please submit your card to us. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, zoning appeals, old business none, new business variance case number PVAR 1236710. This is the location of 1551 Blendmont Drive. We have a staff report, please.
Commission, for the officer approval to maintain the...
I think you're...
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Let me start over real quick. So we have an appeal of a zoning, a planning hearing officer approval.
Yes.
And the approval was to maintain the wall on the southerly property line, which is at the bottom of that colored site plan, and which, with some corrections, there were several corrections because there was an approval for 135-foot-long retaining wall along the southerly property line. There were deviations from it by the applicant, and so we worked with the applicant in getting as-built conditions and then trying to cut down on those as-built conditions that we can bring into compliance with the code. And the one area that we couldn't was the separation between walls that are on the same property. So we approved it as such with conditions, and the applicant, now the appellant, did not want to, he wanted to appeal two of those conditions. And one of them is the portion of the retaining wall on the south property line. He wants to maintain a portion of a wall that's four feet high that was created without a permit as a retaining wall on top of the three-foot-high wall that he did get approval for. And we were going to allow him to keep the three-foot-high wall. He wants to keep the four-foot-one on top of that. And then also, we had asked for him to continue a veneer material that he's using on the street face, which he did not get permits for that wall or the veneer, and asked him to continue it around to the rest of the wall where he did get approval. So those are the two conditions. His, that he's appealing. So the staff reviewed, or I should say, the planning hearing officer reviewed the original variance, approved it. The applicant felt that these two items needed to be appealed, and the staff would like to maintain what they have, and I'll be glad to answer questions, but that's pretty much the gist of it.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
When you say, "continue the material," I'm looking at Exhibit 3 submitted by the appellant.
Okay.
And looking at it, on one side, it looks like, do you have it in front of you?
Actually, it's on there.
Right. So you're basically asking them to continue this material across. Is that correct?
Yes. The wall that is facing and running parallel to the street never received a permit. The applicant built that in the street front setback without a permit, and he went ahead and put the veneer on. The applicant is now proposing, as part of one of those correcting measures, to remove that corner part of the wall. It's on the plans up here, so that it's out of the setback, meets code. And so we thought, well, since he has this veneer on there, which is a nicer material than what he's done on the south elevation, that we thought we'd have him continued around. Most likely, if he had come in at the beginning to get approval for that wall to comply with code, we'd probably have him continue what was approved on the south elevation, which is to the left. But he went ahead and built that without permits and did that. So the better, higher quality is what's facing the street, and there shouldn't be an inconsistency between the two materials.
So just to wrap my mind around it, there was no permit for this portion?
That's correct.
There was only a permit for this portion?
That's correct. For a portion that's out of the setback, he brought a portion of that wall too close to the street, so he's going to have to cut that wall back. That's correct.
Okay, so in a perfect world, this wall would have ended up somewhere around here.
A few feet back, yes.
And then, what would have, if this wall wasn't there, what would I see right now? More of this?
Yes, you would see that material, because he would probably continue. That whole corner is going to be redesigned right now, based on the approved plans that the applicant submitted to us and got approval for, to bring it into compliance with the code.
But this is not even going to be there?
No.
When all is said and done?
That is correct. So when you look at the rest of the wall...
And is that the one that is reported to be 18 inches high?
Yeah, that's the one the applicant claims to be 18 inches high.
And is it?
That's what he says. We have some photographs here that show it when we issued, if I may, sir. These were, I think, submitted by either Building and Safety or Neighborhood Services, I believe.
This is prior to the veneers going on?
That is correct. And the columns being removed.
So it's not a new photograph?
No, that's one of the beginning when we, the stop-work order was in August 2009. But they continued on. Notice the grade. The applicant says the grade has not been raised, but I don't know, it's hard to tell. So the work continued. Planning is not the building department. All we can do is bring it to people's attention, and so...
Is the landscaping that's in between the wall and the neighbor's wall, is that consistent with the landscaping that's proposed in this new design? A drought-tolerant kind of landscaping that's supposed to cover up the wall even more?
A condition of approval is to provide that. We don't know. Again, these are some of the things that we don't know, because they weren't provided.
But that's a condition?
Yes.
For the new?
That is correct. The applicant has not said that's a problem or anything.
Right. Okay.
So, I'm sorry, and I don't know how to refer to this other than, this photo, and I don't have, this is dated October 11th.
Okay.
I don't know when this is dated. This obviously, this obviously shows, and this is without the veneer.
Correct.
This obviously shows a taller wall than this.
In 2009, there was a, that's when the applicant was asked to stop work on the wall. The permit had expired back in 2007, the last inspection on the inspection part by Building and Safety, 2006. That's just based on the information in Building and Safety. I was a footings, footings and rebar for some portion of a wall that was not approved. There were some corrections on October of 2006. But nevertheless, that's, you know, that's not the issue I'm trying, it's just that we're, in terms of the veneer, the veneer was added. It's a higher quality. The zoning code requires a decorative veneer when visible to the street and to surrounding properties, so this applies to both. And in this case, the higher quality that we would be looking at from a design review point of view would be the higher-quality veneer. Now, again, if the applicant had come in and asked for permits, allowed us to review it, most likely would have this a different scenario. Probably would have used a similar type of wall, decorative wall material that was on the south elevation, because that came first. But at this time, now that we have the nicer one, that's a better quality looking for the community, our goal was to try to upgrade it and to continue it along that south elevation. So it wasn't just something, a whimsical deal, it was actually trying to upgrade it using standards, both zoning code and design review.
The owner is proposing to remove the street facing that front wall and then recess it back?
That corner that we, I showed you, they're going to modify that. That is correct.
How?
They're showing it on the plans right up here. Your look. Their goal is to, this point here, you can see, they're planning on, one of the issues that was a problem for staff and we were always looking for was, where's the setback line? That was never shown on the original plans. The applicant fortunately gave us a copy. It's a little bit faded, but you can see. So we're trying to get a setback line, so here we're showing a 15-foot setback. So we're showing, right now, at that point here, we have, if I may, sir, that point there is the part that we're looking at, that corner. So we're going to cut back to this point, and they're going to stair-step down, like this, down. So that's from the side, and this is from the street. And the idea is to stair-step it down and create, there's some earth in there. One of the problems is, the height of the wall is not so much the problem, but you can't have this, you can't have backfill. Can't be over 18 inches above the natural grade. And at some point here, I don't have it in front of me, but listen, it's about five-and-a-half feet above the natural grade. It's five-and-a-half feet above the 18 inches. It's like six, six-and-a-half feet. So it's too tall in here, so they got to break that down. So all this wall that's behind the 15-foot setback has to be diminished. Now, I'm thinking, based on the photographs that you see there of the original condition when we asked for the stop-work order, that once they start excavating here, it may have some effect here, it may expose some of the wall over there as they start moving dirt around. But anyway, going back to the point that you're referring to, the veneer, it's your call, but for us, we were trying, based, as I said, on two, at least two issues. One is a code issue, Chapter 30.30, regarding the decorative material is required facing streets and neighbors. They put a higher quality on, we're asking them to continue.
On the findings, I believe staff wrote, draft findings?
Mm-hmm.
One of the findings for, was that retaining walls are sometimes necessary in hillside developments for the enjoyment of, the reasonable enjoyment of a property?
Yes, sir.
If you already have a backyard, you know, or a place to play, how do you define reasonable enjoyment if you're extending more beyond just the backyard that you have?
That's a very good point. We have these standards in the zoning code, so that creates a basis. So someone would start off and say, "What can I put up?" So we have a standard that says, "On a side yard, in an ideal world, it can't be more than five feet in height," when it's five feet from a property line. So when you have a topography that starts here, I think this up in here, right around the house is 99, and it slowly works down, 98, 96, down to, I think, like, at some points here, 92, you have a sloping, the original condition, which sloped down like this. So somebody comes in, engineers it, sets some parameters, and then that provides the parameters. So the enjoyment may not be the complete yard, it may just be that portion that they're able to comply with the zoning code standards, much like the enjoyment of a house. You have floor area, you've got landscape, floor-y landscape percentage, let block coverage, number of parking spaces. Once you create that form, that tells you what you can have. Same thing would apply with the zoning, with the retaining walls. So for instance, one of the arguments the applicant makes, it's a legitimate one, is that he has a neighbor next door, and the neighbor has this huge wall. Now, this wall here is the wall in question that we're discussing right now.
This outer, this outer lead?
That is correct, sir. So the applicant, I believe it's in this, yes, so the applicant says, "My neighbor to the north of me up here has this big wall." That's a legitimate question, I mean, equity issue. "I'd like to have the same enjoyment as this gentleman." And he points to one across the street. But both of these houses were built way before the Hillside Design Guidelines, which came about in the early 90s. So unfortunately, it's like anything else, is that this is probably the reason why we have these design standards now under the Hillside Design Guidelines, why we have these zoning code standards, because of that right there.
That older wall was built when the house is built?
That's the only thing I can think of, because I cannot find a permit for the tall one.
Yeah.
I find permits for the small ones.
Yeah.
Which are consistent with the code.
And the small one that belongs to the neighbor's, is that on or just a little bit inside the neighbor's, the other neighbor's property?
I did not investigate that much of it.
Okay. Is that, that's what I felt like I was reading in the staff report, that if you measure from the actual property line, there's more distance, but if you measure from the neighbor's retaining wall, there's a four-foot-nine?
It's not this one.
Okay.
All right. I know what you're talking about. So here we go. We have two different standards. I don't want to mess you guys up with them, because this will make your head spin, so believe you me. So here's what we have. If you look here on these two standards, let's go to Section H. So one of the things you're trying to work with the applicant is there's two standards to look at. One is, the distance from a face of wall to a property line can dictate the height of this wall. So from this point to property line, if he's five feet away from property line to face this wall, he can have a five-foot-high wall. If he is closer than five feet to the property line, the wall cannot exceed three feet. Again, this sets these parameters, which you're referring to, the enjoyment of one's property.
Right.
So in this particular case, we have a five-foot-high wall, five feet from the property line, and he's achieving that by grading up, sloping the dirt up. Now, here's the other standard that gets confusing. We have one that says, "However, to be a detached unit and not, and be counted in height as an individual unit, you have to be separated from the other unit. Otherwise, they are combined height." So in this particular case, this wall is on his property, a portion of it, not all of it, because the footing is clearly, and a portion of the rest of the wall is clearly on the neighbor's when the house was built back in the 50s. There was a permit for this wall. So they don't meet this standard, and this is the standard that we had to go to hearing on.
So between the neighbor's retaining wall and their retaining wall, it's a, it's a shorter distance?
That is correct, sir. We have like four-and-a-half feet, something like that.
It's shorter by seven inches, though.
Yeah. So those are the two standards, that are a little bit confusing.
Right.
Okay? So that's the one we had to go on, because on the original approved plans, the applicant had showed there's going to be a clear five-foot separation from face, from back a wall to face a wall, but he moved it in an extra six inches to capture some additional land to flatten this property.
Okay.
And so far, I know we sort of got away from your decorative question.
No, but if we don't have any questions right now?
Thank you.
Go on to, you guys have any other questions? Okay. We have one speaker card. It's the applicant Larry Formall.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to hear our side. I can already tell that you've been very thoughtful about these issues.
I'm sorry, and you have three minutes, right? Fifteen, fifteen minutes.
Okay. Well, I will try to go quickly and cover everything, but as Mr. Baxter has already pointed out to you guys, the code and the standards that we're dealing with are kind of confusing, and I'd like you to take that into consideration as you understand the progression of this entire project, which has taken over several years. Let me just start by saying that I've explained to my client, and we all acknowledge that the necessity for a planning code and the necessity for a tool like that for orderly development in a community. But we also, I think, can understand that strict interpretation of the code can sometimes result in maybe some unnecessary results or unreasonable results. We've talked about what is the reasonable use of a property, and I would propose to you, at the very least, reasonable use is what you can do within the confines of the code. And I will show you that what we're asking for today is actually within the confines of the code, okay? But I would also propose to you that beyond that, because we have a variance process, the community can determine that there can be some variance from the strict interpretation of the code, and that too can represent a reasonable use of one's property. I would also submit that in determining what is a reasonable use, you consider what harm might be occurring to neighboring properties. And I'm going to argue to you today that compliance with the conditions that are being imposed with the variance would actually harm the neighbor's property in terms of reducing the amount of privacy that they currently enjoy. And that is one of the concerns that they came and voiced when we were at the hearing on the variance. Let me step back for a second and just point out, too, that procedurally speaking, we are here on a variance request, or an appeal of the approval of a variance request. That request, only the front portion of the southerly wall, okay? We've talking about the southerly wall, it really can be broken up into two portions, the front and the back, okay? The front portion of the wall, as we've noted, is five feet in distance from the property line, but less than five feet from the retaining, the southerly neighbor's retaining wall, okay? Mr. Baxter indicated that that wall was approved based on plans that did indicate that it was a five-feet distance from the wall to the property line. We did not move the wall, we just did not know that the southerly neighbor's wall was actually on our property, okay? So we didn't try to capture six more inches of space, okay? That front portion of the wall was originally approved to be six foot, six inches high. We have agreed to bring it down within code compliance to five feet, okay? As we've indicated, that front corner in this picture is going to be completely removed. It's going to be a stair-step construction going back along the parallel of the street and is along the southerly property line. So that whole portion of that corner will not be there.
You want to come closer to the mic?
Sorry. That whole portion of the corner will not be there, and if you look at some of the pictures that I have provided, you will see that that, that whole wall will be covered by vegetation. And so when we are appealing the idea of using the same veneer as along the street, as along the 135-foot wall on the south end, we are, one, concerned with the substantial cost that the higher-quality veneer is going to be for this construction, and we're concerned with the fact that it's going to be completely covered anyway. Mr. Baxter was saying that had we been looking for approval originally, the south wall construction would have met standards. But because we have tried to make the front portion of the wall look even better, now we're being held to a higher standard, and we have to do the southerly wall as well. I want to point out again that that corner is not going to be there, and that those walls will not be touching each other, they will be separate units, and that southerly wall is already completely covered by the vegetation currently, and you can see that in some of the pictures. So, and again, procedurally speaking, the variance request was, again, with regard to that five-foot separation in the front wall. We did not cover the back portion of the wall that's within that five-foot separation. The reason we didn't do that was because we didn't believe that a variance was necessary for that. We had already, in consultation with the city, agreed to remove the fill behind that wall so that there would only be three feet of retaining wall. The additional height of the wall was going to be completely freestanding. The condition imposed that that freestanding wall be removed was done for the purpose of trying to mitigate against the effect of a massive wall along the property line. That condition only concerns the back portion of the wall. It does not affect the massing effect of the portion of the front wall, which was the focus and the scope of the variance request. I would argue to you that the conditions imposed on approval of a variance need to be reasonably related to the condition that is at the subject of the variance request. These are two completely different issues. I'll leave that for you. More substantively speaking, though, the request that we are seeking to have the back portion of the wall be three feet of retaining wall and additional height in freestanding wall is within the confines of the code, okay? The code already allows for this. This is not a variance, we're not asking for a different condition or a variance from the code. Section 30.30.01010A2 indicates that you can have up to three feet. Section 30.47.020G4A indicates that the community development director can exempt a wall up to eight feet. We're only asking for, right now, actually, the wall is an additional four feet of freestanding. That's what we're asking for, okay? Our request...
On top of the three feet, you're asking for the four feet?
Three feet retaining.
Plus the four feet?
Additional four feet freestanding, okay? That request would only return the condition of the property to what it was prior to any construction. I provided some pictures. If you look at Picture B, I believe, B1 and B2, these are pictures taken from the southerly neighbor's yard prior to any construction. And you will see, in particular in B2, how long, or how tall that wall is, with the vegetation, okay? It is about the same height as the crest of the neighbor's roof, okay?
It's in, it's in the appellant's package.
If you look at the, the next... If you look at the next picture, Exhibit C, this is during the actual construction of the wall, you will see the outlines of the neighbor's chain-link fence that was built on top of the existing retaining wall, the neighbor's retaining wall. So clearly, it was allowed to have freestanding wall on top of retaining wall. And this is the condition that the applicant is seeking to reproduce at this point, okay? We want to, if you look again at Exhibit D and D1, you'll see that the height of the wall is at the same level as the crest of the roof of the neighbor's house. If you look at pictures E1 and E2, those are pictures that I took standing on the applicant's house, looking towards the neighbor's property. You'll see in these pictures that you cannot see the neighbor's property from that standpoint, okay? That's the neighbor's property. There's a pool back there in the neighbor's house. You can't see any portion of the pool as the wall is currently built. I ask you to consider, to imagine, if we lowered that portion of the wall by four feet. You look at Exhibit A, you'll see a diagram of what the condition would require compared to what we are proposing. An entire chunk of that wall, again, looking at B1 or B2, of that existing wall will be gone, and the applicant, the appellant, will be able to look directly down into the neighbor's yard. Certainly, and I wish that the neighbor had come today, because I would love to point this out to them, because I know that they are concerned about their privacy, and that's the reason why they showed up for the hearing on the variance, okay? Let me also point out that compliance with the condition would be an extreme hardship to the appellant. The existing wall incorporates a drainage system. You look at Exhibit D2, you will see that there is a long drain that runs parallel with the entire wall. That drain is meant to capture all of the runoff that is caught along the back of the property and throughout the property, because as Mr. Baxter has noted, the property does elevate from south to north to catch all of that runoff and bring it forward to the street. If that back portion of the wall is removed or reduced, that entire drainage system becomes obsolete, ineffective, has to be completely redesigned. And now we're talking about some sort of design in the back that pumps water out to the front. It will be cost prohibitive, and it is unnecessary, in my opinion, because we're already talking about construction and design that is within the confines of the code, which only returns us back to the original state of the property, which ensures that the neighbor continues to enjoy the privacy that they're enjoying currently. Finally, I would also like to point you out, point you to the last Exhibit F, which was my attempt to show you the current condition of that back wall. Remember that the proposed condition was imposed to try to reduce the effect of the massing of the wall, to create an area for landscaping that would soften the effect. Exhibit F1 is my attempt to show you that that wall is already completely covered with vegetation. You cannot see the wall at all. It is completely softened by landscaping. This is the drought-tolerant type of vegetation that has been approved. This is vegetation, really, that I believe is intertwined with the neighbor's vegetation as well. So again, requiring us to remove that portion of the wall is going to have to remove all of that vegetation. It's going to eliminate the blind that is created. And again, I want to be clear that the proposal is to remove the fill behind that wall. So it's not like you'll be able to walk up to the edge of the property line and--
Is he going to stand by the mic?
Sorry, and look over, because that wall, the fill, will have been removed, and so you'll be standing against another wall, and you will not be able to look directly over. So I believe that if you do not impose that particular restriction, not only will you be acting within the confines of the code, the spirit of the code, allowing for the reasonable use of one's property while protecting the interests of his neighbors, and again, avoiding a significant hardship to a citizen of the City of Glendale who has been here and resided here for over 30 years and only wants to continue to do so. If there are any other questions that I can address, I'd be happy to do so. It's, I think, important to understand what the current conditions of the project are. It's unfortunate that we got to this situation. I think there were a lot of misunderstandings and situations that I think currently won't occur, but I think the city has acknowledged that they had some part in erroneously approving the construction of that wall. I'm not trying to deflect the responsibility that my client has in constructing it, but we're here now in good faith to try to address everybody's concerns, and removing that portion of the wall, I think, hurts everybody. And then, lastly, placing the veneer along the 135-foot wall, I think, is just unnecessary. I understand what the point and the purpose was, but given the vegetation and the fact that it's completely covered and not noticeable from the street, as opposed to the street front view, or the street front wall, which is less than 18 inches, I think is unnecessary.
Just to be clear, the conditions you were talking about are conditions nine and 10B, right?
Nine and 10B, Mr. Baxter has also pointed out that I think 10B is very much related to number seven or number eight. Both of them talk about removing any freestanding portion of the wall.
But it's not, yeah, really nine and 10B, what you were just talking about.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have questions?
Actually, I have a question to the staff, not from, so I guess when he's done, I'll come back to the staff.
Okay. I don't think we have any questions for you right now. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, Mr. Baxter, when he talks about being able to, in our code, build on top of the retaining wall, even if the overall height exceeds the retaining wall height, now, what is the existing condition now, and why is it being forced to move another five feet in? So can you explain that a little bit more?
Okay, all right. Since you're mentioning now, this is a point, it's a legitimate point the applicant brought up, and so, can I follow that pointer? I guess I have the pointer. Thank you, sir. All right. So we have, the area that the applicant's referring to is, this is the wall that was permitted. This is the portion of the wall that we're discussing. This is the front part that you're referring to. This is the back part, and only this part here.
That needs to be reduced to three feet?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, yes. Now, on the approved plans, this was a three-foot-high wall. So let's look here, we have C and E. Here's an E, and here's a C. So what was approved was a three-foot-high wall. This, freestanding or retaining, was not part of the project. So it was right here. And it was going to have a slope back, I believe. I do have them here, but I think this is it. What happened was is the applicant continued to build retaining wall up here. This does not exist. So the actual condition, you can see, is a nice flat pad right through here, all the way through of retaining. As part of our remedying the problem, the applicant said, okay, we only want to bring one issue as a variance. We can go in and excavate behind this. It is two-to-one slope, which is the minimum you can have by code. You can't have it steeper. Put it back five feet, because that's how it works out. Drop this down to three feet, and then we're going to leave this here as freestanding, like a freestanding wall. And so we felt that based on our Hillside Design Guidelines, since this wall has no permit, didn't receive any permit, freestanding or retaining, that we have an opportunity at this time in a discretionary action to take this and put it back here, put landscaping here, and help out.
Could you make it three feet just by changing the landscaping and changing the visible portion of it?
Could you show me? I'm not quite sure I understand what you're referring--
Could you make it a three-foot wall just by changing the visible portion of it from five to three? Is that possible?
By code, retaining wall is when it retains earth, if I'm understanding you. So it has to be retaining of something. This can only be freestanding unless I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
So you cannot have a dirt behind it?
Yeah, you can't just have hiding it.
No, you can't have dirt. Well, see, here's the problem here, and this is an interesting point here. Here's the downslope wall. Property line separates it right here. So this wall, why is there no five-foot separation? Well, this is completely on a neighbor's property. There is no pathies here, you know? So we have, so it's right on the property. So why the code reads is three-foot maximum visible face. So there is no opportunity to put a two-to-one slope between here, because his piece of property is like an inch or something, very small. So he can't do a slope up here to try to lower this to get some more here. So that was our call, because they said, we won't have this part of the variance, we'll just excavate out. And we said, well, you know, we could provide some landscaping here, landscaping here, push that back there, and that was our idea, to be consistent with the Hillside Guidelines.
Which says that right now, there's a, I saw the storm drain gutter.
At this point here, it's filled. Their proposal is to cut this out--
Ah, I see.
--and pluck that out, put it away, make this open right here.
The condition, not the proposal.
No, the proposal--
Of--
--is to cut the dirt out here--
Okay.
--which would be all of this area here, because right now, this little wall doesn't exist. See, this little wall right here doesn't exist. This is the proposal. I'm going to come in here and excavate this out, which is five feet, just cut that out, two-to-one slope, make this open here, and then just leave the wall as freestanding behind it, non-retaining.
The non-permitted wall.
The non-permitted wall.
But you would be okay with it, with that? Just imagine that you pick up that freestanding wall and you push it back.
That's correct.
You would be okay with that?
That's the condition, sir.
But they're not okay with that.
They're not okay--
Which is why we're here.
Which is why you're here.
The applicant mentioned that the neighbor left some comments at the last, at the hearing.
Hmm.
What were, can you give us the nature of the comments?
Yes. The neighbor actually submitted a letter. That's what first triggered a lot of this. In 2000, August of 2010, the neighbor submitted a letter to city council with multiple complaints about the project. A lot of it is the issues of the, how can you build a big wall so, you know, next to my property, et cetera, et cetera, the privacy issues. I probably have it over there, I can look it up to give me more detail. But that was a major issue at that time. Then that's when the planning staff got involved, because when it's under construction and you have a permit, the planning staff is pretty much out of it, it's building and safety. So we went out and said, hey. And then you saw some of the photographs with the columns in the front, and we said, where is that? You know, we don't, we don't show any wall wrapping around here. And that began the conversation with the applicant to try to present as-built, which was a long process, but we finally came to some kind of feeling of where the things were. And then from there, we said, where can we go from now to reduce as much as possible any deviations from code? And this is one of the solutions, proposed solutions, is to just cut this dirt out for this length here. And we thought, well, you know, that's, all this spot here is kind of like dead area anyway. Why don't we put the wall here, put some nice landscaping? It would reflect what the applicant, excuse me, what the appellant is proposing, it'd even be better. Pushes the wall back, the applicant has a little less privacy here. One of the photographs that the applicant had submitted, excuse me, the neighbor had submitted during the complaint, was showing one of the, was showing one of the workers or someone standing here staring into her backyard, but they were right on the edge. And that was one of her complaints, hey, I completely lost my privacy here.
Well, they could still do that in the--
In the front part, yeah.
Or the--
Well, one of the things is, again--
The back--
--the condition number eight, which the applicant didn't specify in the appeal, in which I called him and said, hey, you know, why don't you, you know, since we're doing this, let's talk about this, is that condition eight says, you're going to need, if you look at your photos of this, you're going to need a safety wall on top of this. So where are you going to put it? You're going to put another 42-inch-high wall on top to make that already five-foot wall that's visible now, another three and a half, so you have another eight and a half feet. So if you look at that height, it's starting to add up. And so, looking at the Hillside Design Guidelines, this idea of breaking wall masses, much like what's on the neighbor's property, excuse me, on the, yes, on the neighbor's property to the north that the applicant wants to replicate, we're trying to say, that's why the code came into effect. The Hillside Design Guide was 1993, to break up, articulate, and provide landscaping in between to soften screen. Because anyone can take a flat landhouse and carve out a hillside, slap big walls in, and tuck that baby right in there.
Has the neighbor submitted any other letters? Because we, we didn't get, receive anything from--
That is correct.
--the neighbor.
That is correct. I don't know. No, the question, the answer is no. Not for this time around. For the, for the variance, yes. The neighbor even showed up.
But they were at the hearing this week.
At the hearing for the variance, they showed up and submitted a letter.
And that's when the conditions were, were put--
That is correct.
--in response to the neighbor coming to speak at the hearing.
That is correct. So partly, yes.
Actually, the conditions were put because of the Hillside Ordinance Guidelines.
Right.
Neighbor could have been a, you know, a other layer of reason--
Right.
--for privacy. But Hillside Ordinance Guidelines dictates what Chris Baxter is reciting for us at this moment.
Yeah, so it gives it substance. Okay. We have--
Anything else, sir?
Any other questions?
I have a question for you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Would chain-link fence be considered as a non-retaining wall on feet of a, on top of a three-feet retaining wall? Would a chain, is that, is that a permanent fixture, a chain-link fence, or is it, is it considered non-permanent as far as we're concerned?
No, it's a permanent, it's a permanent feature, but it's not retaining. It's a non-retaining freestanding.
Right.
Okay, if we don't have any other questions, close the public hearing.
All right, sir.
Thanks, thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. I'd like to go first in discussing, sharing your opinions.
Yes.
Surely.
I was asked if they had any rebuttal--
Oh, yeah. Would you, do you have any, does applicant have any rebuttal? I would like to say any closing remarks. And you have, I think, three minutes to have any rebuttal to what was just discussed.
Thank you. I would just like to point out that the condition number eight that Mr. Baxter was referring to indicates that any safety walls would have to be five feet back. I don't believe, though, the language, and I don't, and certainly wasn't our understanding, that that language in the actual approval requires us to put in any sort of safety wall. So I just want to make that-- So I just want to make that clear that what we are appealing at this juncture is the back portion of the wall and the idea that, again, that a freestanding wall is allowed on top of a retaining wall. Previously, it was a chain link fence. The code would allow for a chain link fence on top of a retaining wall. We believe in this case, it is a continuation of the wall, but it would continue to be freestanding. I believe that the intentions of the applicant are to put some landscaping behind that portion of the freestanding wall to shield it from its own side of the property or the own side of, of the wall. So in this situation, I don't believe that sticking to the strict interpretation of, of pushing that wall, that entire wall, five feet back, is in line with the spirit of the development code, is in line with the reasonable use of the property. Again, because pushing that portion of the wall back does eliminate the drainage system that is currently in place and that would protect the neighbor's property. And to do otherwise would probably create a cost prohibitive situation at this point and leave the neighbor's property in jeopardy. So with that, again, I think that a special look at the unique situation in this case is warranted and that a slight deviation from the strict interpretation is warranted to the extent that it's necessary. Because again, I believe that the code and city staff has already conceded in their report on the variance that what we are requesting is within the confines of the code. So I ask that the commission take a look at the significant hardships that would incur if they were forced to comply with the condition and consider that as they make their decision.
Thank you. Okay, we have any other questions for the applicant?
What, the, is there a proposal with what you were suggesting? What, what needs to happen as far as setting that three-feet wall back and getting that two-to-one slope? What happens with the drainage at that time?
That, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is one of the issues that has triggered this. There would be, well, it might be helpful just to point out a couple of things here because the building official and one of the city attorneys sat in on a meeting with the, the appellant on this. And this is a little over my head, but I'll try to share what I understand. One of the things the applicant wanted to do here, so we'll go to C and E again, C and E, was, well, what if we keep some of that wall up for like a, in fact, this issue is actually a very good point, I'm glad you brought that up. Right here, you know, if you have drainage, what keeps the water from just flushing right over the top? And so the applicant was making a legitimate point about having this freeboard, but they wanted a much higher freeboard. They were basically wanting to keep pretty much the whole wall there. And we were saying, no, that's inconsistent with the condition. And then we got pretty strict and said, you know, no freeboard, but it's right back to your drains issue. How do you solve this? So the, the building officials had responded to the applicant, the applicant's or the appellant's engineer, and said, you know, you're only showing us one way to solve this puzzle. He says, even on your plans, you show us that you use at least a couple, maybe more, different types of drainage solutions. So you have, and so he was pointing them out to me. For instance, here we have a drainage, which is like a little catch basin type thing here. We have a similar condition right here, we, and here. So we have also on some previous, in fact, on the approved plans, there was only a small little freeboard for a similar condition in the back. Remember, C and E were approved as a three-foot-high wall on the approved plans.
But they were not built as three-foot-highs?
No, sir. But on the three-foot-high wall, they had a small little catch ba, uh, freeboard.
Okay.
Wasn't any issue about that. But it wasn't two and a half or three-foot-high freeboard, you know. So we have a four-foot-high wall, we have a four-foot-high wall right here, but does it have to be that? Can't it be the minimum? And that's what the city engineer, the building official, the former building official in that meeting, and in an email to the, the appellant's engineers, hey, you're only showing us one option, which is a freeboard, relatively tall one, which I disagree with your calculations. We feel it's, you know, overkill for what a small area with a five-foot separation, you do something much smaller. Plus, you've got other options, you may not even need a freeboard. And, you know, use a combination. There's many ways to solve the problem without creating a massive wall. Well, four feet's not massive, but we're, we're not creating this wall, where you can take that wall, push it back. And as far as the applicant's referring to, this, this is the same problem that's going to occur, you know, because it came up at that meeting. And I'm glad you brought it up because I do want to bring this up. We have the same issue, D and H. So let's start with D toward the back. And I'd like your feedback because this is going to come up in plan check right here. Here's a perfect example right here.
You're in section D and H, sectionality deductio.
This is in the front part of the wall. So we got D, and we have H. Both these walls show two-to-one slope, maximum, uh, minimum, maximum you can have. And it ends right at the top. No freeboard on top. Same thing applies over here for H, right up here. No freeboard, ends right at the top. So there'll be some kind of drainage, and it'll go on to the neighbor's property. And I know the neighbor has expressed that that's not going to be, they're not going to be satisfied with it. So the applicant will be required or want to solve the problem by putting on some type of a freeboard.
Sorry.
But now, I'm sorry, sir, my last thing. When we asked the applicant to submit, we had hoped, because the applicant's design person is a registered engineer on his, on some other of his plans, he actually has his engineering stamp, we would have thought that something would have been for the variance hearing, because these are the variance hearing plans, to show that, so we'd be looking at it. Being planners and not engineers, we assume that this worked. And so we get into a meeting after the approval, we find out, you know, that's not going to work. So they're going to have to add some kind of a freeboard there. And the problem is, is, you know, we got an issue with the neighbor next door saying, well, that's my wall as much as his wall. So the, so we're not showing, and we're not showing increasing this wall height. And I think if there's going to be an increase in wall height there, there's going to be some problems.
Yeah, and so my, the reason that I ask, and I think, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm getting the sense that what you're explaining by, what you're suggesting by, by complying with the, with the Hillside Ordinance, in this case, in the back portion of the wall, the, that drainage issue will not become a burden. There are other alternatives for it. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
According to the building official, it's not. And the applicant, I think, is misunderstanding condition number eight, because we are saying that there's going to be requirement to put a freestanding wall of some sort here or fence. And the way our condition was is to set that back and not have it on there. Again, to break up the massing. Instead of having the five feet, you know, it would be an extra whatever, 42 inches at minimum. They could even have it taller. And it creates a problem, which is inconsistent with the Hillside Design Guidelines. And staff has the ability and the obligation to review that when they come in for a permit. And that's one of the things we considered during, in adding these conditions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just...
Hold on. I, I will allow just a brief response to the drainage issue and, but just limit your comment to that, please.
Sure. Just with regard to the drain issue, we're not trying to argue that there aren't alternatives to fix the problem. I'm just trying to impress upon you that the alternatives are going to be extremely expensive. I mean, one of the alternatives that we're talking about is a catch basin in the back of the property that's going to catch all of this runoff. And then that runoff has got to be somehow pumped out to the street. With the current design, the, the runoff is, uses gravity to remove it from the back portion of the property to the front. If you use a catch basin technique, you're dropping the water down in elevation and you will not be able to use the gradual elevation to get it out to the street. And so the alternatives, while they are possible, are extremely burdensome in terms of cost and design.
Thank you. Okay. You want to go? Um, we're going to take a, just a one-minute brief recess and then we'll, we'll go into deliberation. Okay, thanks.